The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarola's Insurance Agency at www.decarolasinsuranceagency.com. If everyone could take their seats, it's six o'clock, we're going to get going promptly. First, I would just like to welcome everybody to the beginning of the fiscal year 2022 budget meetings for the Leominster City Council will be holding tonight and tomorrow night. Tonight is the first night of two nights. This evening, I have myself as the chairman of the Finance Committee, as well as Pauline Cormier, the clerk, and Peter Angelini is the third member. First, I'm required to read the notice because we do have a quorum of the City Council. This notice of a City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of City Councils is present at the Standing Committee meeting. If less than a quorum of the City Council is present, no committee of the whole meeting shall take place. If a quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the Standing Committee agenda items listed above. So, in just a moment, at six o'clock, we were scheduled to have the mayor give a budget overview. We will begin with that as soon as we get the projector up and running.
For the record, I didn't hear the whistle yet, Mr. Cormier.
My phone says 6:01.
I'll notify the fire department at once.
Let them know. They're running late.
You want to shut off one of the lights, maybe, so you can see them? Ready to go?
All set, Mayor, whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
There you go.
There we go.
Anyway, good evening. It seems like we were just here. And for everyone's benefit, I did as much as I could so I can read off of this, but it keeps me to the, to the agenda. So, there we go. We'll go back one slide and two slides. There's our new park downtown, which you graciously work, work with us on, and we were able to get that parked on, budget on time, and it's a beautiful addition to the downtown, I think you would have to agree. Fiscal responsibility and sustainability for our future is always been mantra, it's always been our theme, it's always been how we devise our policies, much in the way of questioning to the new comptroller CFO yesterday was around policy, building sustainability, and, and so we'll go to the next slide. I want to thank all the departments, department heads, employees of the city who stepped up to the plate. We ran our own testing tents, vaccine clinics. I was told that we did, just in one vaccination location, over 6,000 people, made over 5,000 phone calls to the elderly in the community to hook them up and connect them with testing and also vaccine. For the CARES Act and our pending femur application, there was a little or no effect on the city budget. $2.1 million of our, $3.6 million went, was spent on schools. And here's where we break it down, I don't know if you can lodge in that at all, but here's where we break it down. I think a councillor asked last week, so how did you spend your CARES Act money? There's a summary there.
Appropriation is $6,337,577.20. The water department increase is $872,129. Sewer department increase is 826-028. I will let you, I will let them explain that they're a receipts account and the overall budget represents a 2.71 increase in the budget. As always, talk about net school spending. This goes back to year '07 all the way up until 2020. We don't know what the 2021 numbers are just yet. We'll know them soon, but 2020 puts us at about $1,529,603 over net school spending. The average net school spending, if you take from '07 to '20, is about $964,423.93 over net school spending. Our functional summary, not going to sort of blast through this here. Each department will come up and present their information and I'll go through some of the other areas. You can look at debt service and miscellaneous items that are here that are down. Human services actually up just slightly. Public safety up slightly. General government up as well. And that gives you the, from 2018 to 2022, which gives us our budget. Last year was $133,500. I'm using approximate. Budget highlights. Fiscal year 2022 budget will utilize a prop two and a half tax increase in our levy. Fiscal year 2021 tax levy ceiling is $83,466,290. New growth, local estimated receipts increase about $800,000. It could be anywhere from, new growth could be anywhere from $800 to a million. That's approximately what we've been using. And the rooms tax, we haven't got yet, but we've sort of figured some of it into the, we've left that as a buffer in the budget. But rooms tax is picking up, but it certainly isn't what it was. And so we didn't want to try to tie in last year's number if, if in fact, we didn't want to use that number not knowing what it, what it might be. So here are the budget highlights. Not very interesting, but new positions funded. We work closely with public safety and this went on for some time and I give a lot of credit, the police chief, this is his first budget and again, very proud of him and the department. They did an outstanding job. The fire department is always data-driven, always comes in with reports. And in comparison this year, I asked the chief some time ago to come in with a comparison looking at the difference between new firefighters, hiring firefighters versus overtime. And he came back with a report that's one page, but broken down into probably 20 or so different categories. Very impressive. And so this year, we're going to, we're going to take a step into this and we'll certainly be able to monitor this. But, so we will, we will hire three new firefighters in the budget. We're going to hire a new, one new police sergeant. As you know, police reform is changing things. This is an additional, these are additional tasks to the police department. It's very accountable in the process. I think that was explained at a prior meetings. So I don't think this is any surprise to you, but in order to comply, we need another police sergeant. And we talked to you during the process of converting police and police captain-in-chief from civil service and that transition is underway. But one of the things that we agreed on and one of the ways that we were able to get agreement by the union, and this is, we've been without a police captain for 10, how many years? 10 years because we just couldn't afford it in the budget. Well, this year, we came to an agreement with the police union. This is again, another position that's required for under police reform. It's going to be needed. And then one of the issues we have, and I know this and you know this as well, is the building department, there are two people in the building department and they do inspections. One does mostly residential housing inspection, the other one does commercial industrial. It's the complaints that come in, whether they're fences or cars parked in front, you know, at a house with no plates on it, unregistered. The complaints that come in really warrant a part, at least, it should be probably a full-time, but we're going to go with a part-time building enforcement position. But you have to be a certified building inspector in order to be able to enforce that. And so that is, that is in the, this year's budget. As we get into the highlights for education, because that is the bulk of the city budget. When we get into the net school spending budget, we're at $81,704,286. The required net school spending number is $81,395,983. That's an increase. And again, we never know what our final number is over net school spending, but we meet net school spending and then we go over net school spending by about $308,303. The direct appropriation to the school department is up about 5.62%. If you look at the net school spending number and then add in the $308,000, that means their budget is up by about 5.62%. In 2021, the direct appropriation to the school department, again, went from $73,472,964 to $77,604,286. What does all that mean? We break it down to the schools' request and the budgeted request. Then we look at expenses and again, the school committee can move from category to category as they like. That's the law. And the increase in non-eligible net school spending would be school transportation, debt service, and will give us a total of non-eligible net school. So these are the things that are provided and services that are provided to the school department that only the school department uses. And that is 6.385. So it's gone up $150,000. So 6.385,508 does not count towards net school spending. So you can't add that. So when you talk to the taxpayer, you cannot add that to the $81 million. But you can look and say the increase in non-eligible net school spending is there. So it's only attributed to the schools, but that's the formula that they use. On our pension system, if you go to the next slide. Direct appropriation to the schools when we do, I'm sorry, I'm on pension system, but, okay, it's out of order. Let's go to direct appropriation to the schools. Under salary wages and then expenses, again, the school committee can meet later and move these around if they would like. One of the things that came up at budget hearings is that we're using some of the pension money this year. Remember, we paid off the pension. We'll be able to use some of that money for mostly capital items, but we're going to take 2.1, what's the number I didn't, 2.3? $2.3 million from the unfunded liability pension that we were putting towards that and we're shifting that over to the school department. And what I was told by the finance chair of the school committee is that any funds after the direct obligation for the current cost are really policy decisions of the mayor. So I'm leaving you with this, since that's the case. With the additional funding and salaries, I'm suggesting the following, because apparently it is, it is a policy and a directive of the mayor to be able to do this. So I'm suggesting no new administrative positions in the budget, add staff to special needs programs, positions for life sciences and added curriculum that are associated, and added positions in various areas of CTEI. Now we'll talk about the pension system. Funded at 100.9%, Greg Sullivan, a research director for the institute and former state inspector general, said, "Lemester has set the standard for sound fiscal management by becoming the first municipality in Massachusetts to completely pay off its unfunded pension liability. Maybe we should consider putting the mayor and the city council in charge of every pension system in the state. They deserve credit for having successfully safeguarded the pension system to protect public employees and taxpayers." And that statement has been restated by many, many others who understand the pension Fiscal year '22 brings extra funds. The city realizes $6 million in savings from the pension system. We discussed with the council president yesterday, bringing the city's advisor, who advises us on the pension system. There was a recent post on social media talking about how the city lost, and I say "lost," $22 million, which got the attention of the pariah and got the attention of the advisors that advised the city for the pension system because they didn't realize that we lost $22 million. And so they're, they're certainly looking into the matter and would, waiting for an invitation for the city council president once things get past the budget season. But we realized about $6 million savings from the pension system. This year, 2.3 million is going to go back to the schools, directly into the classroom. Let me explain that. Last year and the years before, what you funded is the unfunded pension liability for the schools. This year, you're not funding that. You're funding 2.3 million that's going to go directly back into the classrooms for education, for kids' education. And I want to stop there to make sure we all understand that because it didn't quite get to be in that aspect because we had so much information we were going through. 2.3 million last year, or approximately, went towards just funding the unfunded portion. Now that there is no unfunded portion, we can take those dollars, slide them over so they go into the budget, so there's 2.3 million that are going to be going back into the classrooms and not into the unfunded. Yes?
And that's to meet net school spending, right?
It's, it's, it's-
That's to get the funding level up to the level to meet net school spending.
Well, no. You could take the new increase in the tax rate of 2.5% and use that.
True.
You could take, because remember, as the chair of the, of the finance committee said in the, in the budget meetings, it's the discretion. That's a policy decision. So you could say, you could use new growth and you could use 2.5% increase in the tax rate to fund the, to fund the net school spending.
Right.
It's a policy decision to take 2.3 million from the pension system and directly put it into classrooms.
Right. It's got to come from somewhere and fortunately, this year, you've got the flexibility to do that.
Or we could take it from, I mean, it's a math.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You could take it from new growth and you could take it from the 2.5% increase.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a policy decision and, and I'm saying this, I'm saying to you tonight, how I balanced this and how we balanced it is we took 2.3 million from the unfunded liability and put it, instead of having that being used for the classroom, I mean, for the unfunded liability, that's direct dollars that can be used in the classroom. Whether it meets net school spending or not, its final use isn't to fund the unfunded. It's to actually put it into the classroom. And that's how you get a over $4 million increase in, in the school budget. Yeah. So this year, 2.3 million will go into the, from the pension system into the classroom. We talk about city school grant partnerships. $75,000 in Department of Justice applied, grant applied for door replacement at Northwest School in Fallbrook. We did emergency buttons for all offices and cameras for outside administrative offices. $20,000 grant to put cameras at Skyview in Sammerset, connecting them directly to the police station. $2.2 million for safer routes to school around Francis Drake Schools. $40,000 to the Department of Justice for security upgrades through the school system. And again, we did this in a partnership with the schools. Leveraging public and private funds, we continue to fund the grant administrator's position, leveraging millions of dollars in state and federal grants for programs and capital improvements. There are some cities that have a whole staff for, for grant department and we have one, but we all assist and help. Continue to fund the small business coordinator and economic development coordinator to help retain and grow our tax base. See Click Fix helps us successfully manage hundreds of questions and concerns each year to help our city keep growing with happy businesses, customers, and residents. I don't think you can travel most, or I would say any main route and not see some construction going on. We've got some of the infrastructure grants, and these are just infrastructure of $2.4 million in MassWex grant for that area between, on Whitney Street, down near Mill Street, ending near the state police barracks, all of those streets in between. $2.4 million for MassWex for infrastructure. $2.2 for safer routes to school around Francis Drake, which we mentioned. $250,000 for the state skate park at Francis Drake. $400,000 for Monument Park downtown. $200,000 under the MVP program for the Menus Mark Brook design. $6 million for Route 13 project, which is underway, and the $8 million Route 12 project, which is also underway, starting with replacement of underground utilities. That's night work. Part of our success has been using cash, not borrowing. We borrow for big projects. We have not had to borrow. We're in a good enough financial position not to have to borrow for smaller capital improvement projects like equipment, fire equipment, police, DPW, matches to our new parks, service upgrades at City Hall, infrastructure improvements, new ambulance, new equipment into DPW. We've used cash for one-time cost instead of borrowing. Many communities will borrow for police and fire equipment and also other equipment. They'll borrow for 10 years when some of these things only last five or six. Paving, school department, Chromebooks, assessment center, city school camera system, school transportation, increased expenses, election expenses, IT expenses, grant matches, snow and ice, sanitation and drainage, lights at Fournia Field, vehicle replacements, property demolition, sidewalk expenditures, and upgraded to our technology system. That's all things we did just in the last year. Small business and economic development, more businesses opening than ever before. AIS continues to be a partner, a strong partner with us. Rail Trail is moving forward. Downtown Farmers Market is first of the month and I think we've cut more ribbons in the last two or three years than we probably have done in 10 years. Great time and opportunity for entrepreneurs. And the new police station, we had a updated meeting today. I think it was a, a good meeting. We have a very talented, multi-talented, everybody brings some different talent and skill with them to these meetings. The site is cleared, the adjacent property is purchased, all buildings have been demolished, design nearly completed, board approval is underway, bid qualification process has started, and we'll, we'll be getting those updated numbers pretty soon for the new police station. So we should see construction begin this year. Some will last. The average in 2021, average single-family tax bill statewide was $6,372. The average single-family bill in Lemester is $5,344. Remember, we have a single tax rate and some of those comparisons are communities with a dual tax rate. So where do we go from here? For 2022, we'll be finishing up utilizing our CARES Act funding, finalizing a plan to utilize our estimated $20 million in American Rescue Plan, review the implementation of the school ESSA funds and ARPA funds. The schools have received nearly $24 million in additional funds from the very beginning of this and some of it hasn't even arrived yet. But again, there are some discretionary dollars in there and, and additional funds over the past year and we'll be analyzing critical ways to utilize them for our school and citywide plans. And that's what I have. I tried for a half hour.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I don't have any questions right at this juncture. I'm sure there'll be a lot that will come up as the, as we proceed throughout, later tonight, tomorrow night. I'll ask members of finance, starting with Councilor Pauline Cormier, if you have any questions for the mayor about this presentation?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. And Councilor Angelini?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody from the city council have any questions so far? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you. This is just a broad question about the overall budget. In looking at the, the budget, I was confused because the, the department request column and the mayor's budget for FY '22 did the same, basically. So in looking at kind of down for each department to figure out, okay, well, what did they ask for, what did they need versus what, you know, is in your budget? I couldn't figure that out by looking at the budget.
Well, I mean, we sat down and went through the entire budget with every department. I think what we arrived at is what you see here. And so they may come in with other requests, asks, but that is, they're realistic to know that I need to arrive at a certain number and they need to help me get there. And so, for instance, in some of the, in some of the items, were, in some of the budgets, were capital requests. And so in our savings for, in our savings for, in our pension system, we're going to need to fund, begin to fund our OPEC for, for health insurance. We're going, we have a million dollars in capital request from the DPW. Engine 5, I don't know, how much is engine 5?
675.
675, so save $700,000 by the time we order it. So there are a lot, we removed all capital requests from there because between free cash and that savings from the pension system, we'll pay for those items. But other than that, you know, there's always things like we need two more people here and one more person here. They'll, they'll tell you that.
And that's always, but that's always reflected in the department's ask.
Yeah, I don't know, Jim, why did you?
Yeah, we could, we could update that.
Well, I think that's really important because from my perspective, we always ask the questions. We always ask the fire chief, we ask the police chief, we ask the DPW, you know, because the, the numbers never match up. We say, well, jeez, if you wanted, you know, more in salaries or whatever, and that might have been two full-time people, and then you explain, well, we couldn't afford that. And that's fine. I just need to understand what each department came in with for their request because it's, it's every single department. It wasn't just the, the school department. It was, I went through everything. I'm thinking, okay, I don't, I can't-
Well, I, as I said-
Evaluate this because I can't have nothing to compare.
I think every department knows that we only have so much in funding. So the discussion is, what, what, you know, there are things that we would like, but we understand that the city, it only has so many dollars, so we've prioritized this. So we're not going to go through this exercise of, of, you know, asking for $5 million more than we know you could possibly give us. And, and, and that's why you don't see it here. It's just, it's, it's a conversation about request and asks more than, and that's why you see three firefighters in there because we arrived at the fact that those are the most important things and they arrived at the fact that, you know, I guess I could go back to every one of them and say, put everything you're looking for, everything. And why don't you do that? Why don't you go ahead and put everything in your budget that you want?
No, that's not the point. The point is every year, department heads come down that we speak to and there will be things in their budget that are over and above what is in your budget that you're asking us to approve. And that's fine.
Right.
And we ask the various department heads, okay, so what was that, what was that all about and what did you ask? I wanted a new fire engine or I needed-
I'm agreeing with you.
Or I need, you know, we needed new DPW machinery because our trucks are old. So we have that conversation every year because it's in the department request column. It's not there this year, so I'm confused. I don't know what the departments needed reasonably. I'm not saying put everything under the sun in their request. I'm saying what they come in with reasonably every year. And then we can say, okay, well, fine, well, that was a decision, you know, that the mayor made that, you know, they needed three additional firefighters instead of six. I'm just using that number just for sake of example.
Well, the capital is usually not, capital is usually part of the capital improvements plan.
Right.
But we don't usually fund capital.
Well, there are some pieces of equipment. I mean, there's some stuff that is in the budget usually.
Obviously. But I'm saying, we don't fund in the budget. We'd have to borrow if we did it that way to put it in the budget to do a fire, you know, fire engine five or a million dollars in capital request. So we sort of keep that separate because-
Right, right.
That's not how we're going to fund it through the general revenue.
Right.
But I'm, I'm asking the same thing. Put your budgets together and submit.
Well, didn't, didn't all the departments submit a regular budget like you do every year? Yeah, okay. So that is usually reflected in the third column here, that is the department's requests. So that's what I'm asking for because me looking at two identical numbers, you know, columns of numbers, it doesn't help me evaluate this at all.
Well, could you bring with each of your presentations and submit later all of your requests so that way they have them?
The capital stuff?
No.
No, just what your budget was.
Regular budget.
What you submitted is your regular operating budget, your salary lines, your expense lines, whatever you would normally submit.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good. Because we don't have that. It's not in our, it's not in our budget books. And it's, and I brought last year's just to do a double check because that's the way I've been doing this for 11 years. So it would be helpful to have that information.
Not a problem.
And I know you're short-staffed and I appreciate that and I know that we have a part-time person who's been helping you, but in order for me to really do any kind of quality analysis of this, that's what I need. Thank you.
Okay. So if all departments could just put whatever it is that you're requesting as a sort of side column and get it to us, we can, Jim can probably update it. Yeah, that's not hard.
No problem.
Okay. Yep. All right. Any other questions, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr? All set? Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Dombrowski?
Mr. Mayor, could you just summarize or re-explain the 1.2 million lost in chapter 70 funds?
So every October, they ask, the school department has to submit your total enrollment.
Right.
Well, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Some parents chose to, I guess, homeschool, but they were off our ranks. They were off our counting column. We couldn't count them. They didn't exist. They didn't show up. So the superintendent couldn't count them and they worked hard to try to get a really good, accurate count, but they just couldn't get them. So some students maybe moved during the pandemic, didn't respond, but they didn't show up to be counted. So we can't, so we lost 1.2 million because those students couldn't be counted. And so what I was saying is common sense would say, how accurate of a count could you get in October when, you know, when we're in the middle of a pandemic? So what's happened is we've lost that revenue.
So were you, we're using COVID numbers going into a non-COVID years?
Some students have actually come back and the superintendent, I'm sure tomorrow in the, in the budget presentation will explain that to you. But what we need the state to do, I think in about five minutes, is to meet and say, that was unrealistic for anybody. I mean, I would think a 10-minute meeting with all the, you know, brain power to sit there and come up with this and say, yeah, October wasn't reasonable, right? That was not a reasonable calculation here. I don't think there's anybody, any one of us that would agree using that October's numbers was a good, a good barometer. And, and then to come back and say, well, we're cutting you 1.2 million is, so, you know, we're, we're increasing the budget by over $4 million, but, from last year, but at the same time, we had absorbed the 1.2 million. So that's a, that's just quite a hit, counselor. And I'm sure it doesn't make any sense to you. I mean, that doesn't to me. I keep trying to think of it and putting myself in their shoes, but-
Yeah.
It would seem like state government would be able to get their act together and say, that's not, you know, how, how can we use that? You know, it's like having a race with somebody and you've got four flat tires. I mean, it's just not a, it's not a good comparison. They could have delayed the whole thing and our counts, superintendent, what's our count right now?
We're up by 45 students.
So there you go. I mean, we're a third of the way. They are easy, but the 1.2 million stands, you know, the cut stands. Now, a couple of things that are circulating out there, a couple of things that are happening is the Student Opportunity Act. I know I heard at the school committee meeting that there's $5 million out there. I do not believe in speaking with the superintendent, we received any of that. And if that passes, I'm not sure if that's a $5 million lump sum that we'll get, but that's not something we could count on now. Or is that going to be $5 million over so many years? But certainly if it passes, that's additional funds for the school department. But right now, what's the total amount, the budget year over year, including the 1.2 million cut is over $4 million increase to the, to the school department.
Okay, thank you.
So we did our best in, in, in the budget and, and worked hard at it and I'm extremely proud of everybody that stepped up, all the department heads, all the employees here to bring us to where we are today. It wasn't easy and we had to take everything apart to put it all back together again, but here we are tonight at 6 o'clock and 7, 6:45 with a completed budget and, but if there are questions that come along the way, if, if, it would be very helpful if you could get a list of those questions as you've done in the past and get them to me. That way I could get you answers on those, on those items. It would be very helpful. And the sooner, the better as you get them. Just send them off to us and we'll get them back to the council as a whole.
Okay. Councilor Frida?
Mayor, how did you, or where in the back of your mind is the opera money while you were doing this budget? I mean, Lemester is in, in line for nearly 20 million. I know it's not all together, but how is that? I mean, that's going to take up a lot of the infrastructure once everybody gets some real guidance as to how it can be used.
Right.
So how does that play into the budget?
Roger will explain to you. We talked about 3.3, 3.5 million in infrastructure just off the top of that right away. And, you know, there are, see, the, the issue is they've given us a bunch of categories, but we really don't want to get too far ahead. We want to make sure that we're, that they confirm that. So one of the issues is we feel that students, you know, parents have said, hey, our kids fell behind. You know, they were good readers in the past. They fell a little bit behind. They got a little lazy through the whole process. The teachers did a great job. We would like a, what's called a pop-up library, where we take the library on the road and we bring it to different neighborhoods. The sites pop out. It's not a, it's not the old style, you know, mobile library or anything, but it's a, it's, 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 we plan on using some of the funds to be able to do those things. some of the funds to be able to do those things, to get books out in the kids' hands, continuous reading, afternoons, after-school programs, those sort of things. So, but all our ideas have to be approved. Last thing we want to do is go ahead and spend the money and then submit it and have them say that, you know, that they're not going to let us use it. So we're well on our way, that's, as we finish this, we move into that next dimension there. But yeah, a lot of the infrastructure projects in the city will be able to be funded through that. And, you know, we have free cash, that's on your agenda for now, that transfers that Roger will explain, and the DPW will explain where, you know, some of the, and the new business manager will explain, you know, exactly where those funds are going. So yeah, there's some opportunities there, but we really want to make sure that they'll allow us to use some of those funds for the things that we want to use them for. But, so we're on these webinars and everything with US Conference of Mayors, the Mass Municipal, we're on with the Department of Revenue and.
National League.
National League of Cities, and, and everyone's like, yeah, here are all the columns, here are all the things you can use the money for. But then when you go and submit to them and say, can we use it for this, and you get a, well, you know, we're not sure we're going to use it for that, but.
If I can just add to that, it's been nothing short of a nightmare trying to coordinate the CARES Act and the FEMA reimbursement. I actually commended everybody at the beginning of this at the state because they had some really great forms that, that's what, that's what I get excited about, is forms that actually populate these days, like, because it's such a, you know, it's a, it's sometimes a disaster. But, you know, the CARES Act was dependent on the FEMA, the FEMA reimbursement, CARES Act came first, and then FEMA changed four times what you could do with FEMA and what was reimbursable and the reimbursement rate, and it just, now there's a huge reconciliation process that has now been postponed again because people can't even accomplish it. So I think we're just going to really, we really want to make sure that, that we can spend the money and we know how, you know, they've given us the four pillars of how we can spend it, but not really the, the direct information on specifics on that. So we have another webinar next week and we'll just go from there.
And they extended the deadline for the CARES Act money spending.
The CARES Act money expires at the end of the year, and because the FEMA part wasn't working, so now they've, which is a good thing, it's, it's, you know, it's a good opportunity for all the communities to get it right, but it just, so now, now we've got this reconciliation process by the end of October, and we'll get our FEMA reimbursement back this summer and then be able to spend the rest of the CARES Act money and we'll go from there.
We will have to fund the first, I think you've got a schedule on how we're paying for the, for the fields. There's appropriation request, Council of Congress, we talked about it briefly, but, and I know that's on your agenda for the Finance Committee meeting, but what we typically have been doing is paying down, using our free cash, and in this case, we'll be using the, the pension money to prepay some of the payments for the police station as we get into it, because we're not going to permanently borrow, David, where are you? We don't permanently borrow until later on when we're, you know, far into the process. And so we, normally what will happen is we get several years out, and then we go to permanently bond. David, I don't know if you want to sort of address any of that, but that's, again, that's something that we'll be transferring money out later, you know, to help fund that. So that's, should be kept, you know, kind of. And then there are a couple of areas in the budget, I should add that, you'll see that there's maybe a reduction in salary and wages and some of the things. It's only because we've taken on new people and they're starting, so to speak, at the bottom step. And so, you know, we didn't, we don't have any, we don't have less people, we're just, the budget has dropped because we have a lot of new people, you know, starting at, you know, starting at first and second step.
Are you all set, Counselor Frieda, with all your questions? Are you all set with all your questions? Okay.
No.
Anybody else? Anybody else from the council have any, any questions on this portion of the budget so far? Presentation? No? Okay, well, thank you guys very much for the overview, and we will now move into the departments. First, we have the Department of Public Works, which was scheduled for 6:15.
6:15?
Which, running a little behind, which does include water and sewer. So I'll ask Ray Racine, Roger Brooks, Jake Fleming, and anybody else who's here? And just for anybody who's following along, this is going to be, the DPW portion is line item 521, that's where it starts, and it ends at 7:22. The water is 1075 to 1211, and the sewer is 1213 to 1312 in the budget books, the line item numbers. Okay, good evening, gentlemen. And thank you very much for being here. If you could all introduce yourselves, I know we have at least one new face since we've been back in person, who I met for the first time tonight. If you could all introduce yourself and then give us a quick explanation of your budget and how it's going to impact you for the next year, and then we'll open up to questions and answers. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Ray Racine, the Director of Public Works.
And I'm Jake Fleming, Business Manager, first time in front of you guys, nice to see you.
Roger Brooks, Assistant Business Manager.
All right, Ray, so if you want to start on the DPW portion first, and then we'll move into the water and sewer.
So our budget from the highway side is pretty straightforward, and honestly, we met, the three of us worked together on this thing, and we met with the mayor and Jimmy, and everything we asked for, we got, we weren't cut on any line item that I can see. So I can't complain. We'll stay busy with the funding we have. The only thing that's outstanding for us is, which we agreed to earlier, is that our capital stuff, we haven't agreed upon yet, we're waiting for certification. So as the mayor stated, we have almost a million dollars worth of equipment, are we going to get it all? I mean, whatever we get, we'll make deal with, but my only problem is, is sidewalk tractors are down, they're old, and those things take a beating because, as I was telling a couple of you guys earlier, we have 80 miles of sidewalk that we do every snowstorm. So I mean, we stay on these things and, and quite honestly, because we put salt in the trucks, three of our salt trucks will not pass inspection this year, and they're going to be taken off the road, so it's going to be that much shorter, and I don't know if you know, it takes in excess of a year for us to get one of those trucks built. So we try to stay ahead of it, but right now, we're really behind it a little bit. We need a couple pickups and a couple one-tons, which is for the daily operations, and also snow removal and snow, snow pushing, but those things take a beating in the winter, so that's the problem with it. Other than that, when we get to the point where certification of money comes in, we'll talk again with the mayor and you guys on what equipment we'll be able to purchase.
Okay. I think, I think, Ray, in the past, I, I believe, you know, that this was on the radar in the past, you know, these vehicles and these capital improvements.
They always are.
Right, so, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll see, you know, an appropriation down here, I know that we usually get a one-time expenditure appropriation for things such as new vehicles and things like that. But other than that, I know that we had some savings years back because we do our own street lighting now, which was pretty significant, a couple hundred thousand, and you had directed some of that money to something, what was that again?
Sanitation and drainage.
Sanitation and drainage.
Which is an important feature for us because we have MS4 compliance now, which is unfunded mandate.
Right.
And there's a bunch of things we're required to do by the state that we're trying to stay ahead of.
Right.
And also, we do drain work with it and, and we, we do detention basins, we're trying to get ahead on that also.
Yeah, okay. All right. I know that you had, you had spoken about that before in terms of.
What is it?
Cleaning out drainage and the fact that it's hazardous. Cleaning out drainage and the fact that it's hazardous waste, considered, is that correct, considered hazardous waste?
Honestly, not as bad as it used to because we don't use as much sand. So we have diminished what we take out of the catch basins, 80%. So we really don't have as much as we used to.
Okay.
But we do have a little bit of it, but there's not anything like it used to be.
Okay. Now, as I'm looking through your budget, I, I see, you know, it, everything looks pretty, there's nothing surprising in here, you know, it looks pretty standard, so it does look like you'll be able to accomplish over the next year, you know, what you, what you need to do, which, which is good.
Unfortunately, or fortunately for us, all that grant money that's coming in, we're in charge of all those projects, so we are out straight.
Right, right.
So we're, we're going to have a very busy year.
Yeah.
As we did the last 15 months, I mean, we haven't missed it, we didn't miss a day.
Right.
We came in every day and we got, really had a great year.
Is there anything else, Ray, that you want to add on this portion, the DPW portion? That's on your mind?
I think we're good, I think that the water in the sewer is a little bit more complex than, not as straightforward as mine, but we'll get into what we got going there too because we have a bunch of plans there also.
Mr. Chairman, would it make sense, you're going to ask for questions on this round?
Yeah, I think I'm going to try to keep the two separate, I think it'll be a little easier to differentiate, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll ask Counselor Pauline Cormier if she has any questions or concerns on the DPW portion.
Ray, can you just give us an overview of what you plan to get done over the next year? I know you guys have stayed really busy, are there any major projects we need to look for? Any increases from last year?
For additional funding?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking about, no, physically what you're getting done, what's, how many streets are you getting done, how many sidewalks are you getting done, the things that people are going to see on a daily basis, how many of those?
We have, right now, a million dollars in paving, and as I explained to a couple people earlier, we don't know how we're going to appropriate that yet, we're going to split it up between a couple of different sections, and I have, we have a list of top 100 streets that we get the most complaints and we feel are the most needing of repair, but also you've got to understand that the infrastructure's got to be done first. And you also got to split the difference on number of cars that travel on these roads. I mean, we got Marion Abbott's a mess, and we talk about this all the time, and we have neighborhoods that want to get paved that have, what, eight, 10 cars a day, so we're trying to do some of that in some of the major paving projects where Marion Abbott took us three years to do the drain, the water, the gas, and fix the manholes we needed. So then you take a year to settle out, so we don't have any settlement after we pave. So I mean, there's a lot that goes into how we select where we go. And also, we got $250,000 for sidewalks, I have a list that I can get to you, I'm not certain if you've seen that yet. We have, in preparation for that Viscloide Ave project, that's going to be all rebuilt, you see, that's going to be beautiful, sidewalks both sides, there's going to be crosswalks, and we have $100,000 in work in drainage that we have to do because it's all corrugated pipe. So we, in preparation for that, we have to do that work first. So we're proposing to have that done this year. We got a bunch of stuff, I think that these guys can get into water and sewer stuff that is going to happen around town, and, other than that, we just stay, we do, we'll do our daily maintenance stuff, we, we do catch basin replacement, we used to just put a couple of brick in and go back in another year, now we take them out and just do them all the right way. So we're trying to do things the right way, we're, we're really making a lot of headway on water main replacement. We get a lot, lot less water main breaks, we have a lot less dirty water complaints, so we're pretty proud of what we've accomplished on that end of it, too. You're welcome.
Just to piggyback on that, too, one thing that we talk about a lot is to, is to maximize the money that we spend here on top of the grants that we get. The Francis Drake School, like you said, the 100,000 in catch basin repair and drainage repair, we're doing that to be able to allow for that Safe Roots to School project to move forward. Without that, you know, it's going to.
Ray, can you check to see if your microphone is on, please?
Yes. So we're just trying to piggyback on money that we're receiving, you know, sidewalks, we have the Mass Works Grant, there's a sidewalk portion that's there, we're going to put a bit out now that we have the 250 in sidewalks to be able to get a better price on the sidewalks. So we spend a lot of time trying to maximize the money that we're spending from the budget with projects that are getting funded elsewhere.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Angelique?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, let's me go, Ray, I know recently, I'm sure you're aware, that an observation agent sent down a petition here in the council, and, 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 dealing with the MS4 compliance issues, right? So citywide, you guys must have an idea of what, what that number, what's the dollar amount, you know, to fix any school line of issues, or, you know, gas there?
It's not only fixing, we have to do wet and dry weather testing. And I think there's 400 outfalls, and I have one guy. So we're working on that, too, but, I mean, we don't know what the fix are yet till we find the problems. So we find the problems by doing the testing and finding out what kind of infiltration we're getting into our system.
And I mean, businesses in the city are just getting familiar with the new EPA regulations, quite cumbersome, obviously.
Yes, sir.
Extremely different from the past five years, so I know you guys, it's going to be an extreme challenge for you going forward. And, you know, if you have issues with homeowners or private properties impacted by road drainage, it's going to be dumped in your lap. So again, I'm hoping that some of the, some of this infrastructure, like, from the federal government, may be able to plug some of that, that gap for you.
I'll tell you, a lot of other communities are now having an MS4 impact fee paid by residents, whether it be quarterly, I mean, it's not a lot, but it's enough to generate enough funding to stay ahead of these type problems, because they want the water waste clean, and quite honestly, it makes a lot of sense.
And the natural river being on a 3D list and, you know, that becomes a priority, obviously, so, I'm sympathetic, and, and you guys have been asked to do an awful lot, and it's very good, so you've done a model struggle in the past, and I have full faith and confidence that you'll continue to do that. So thank you, Angelique.
Thank you.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else from the council, Counselor Chaffal, Zephyr?
Yep, thank you. Ray, just in looking at your line item budget, you do have money in there for MS4 compliance, $45,000. I mean, does that, does that, you know, cover your compliance costs?
It scratches the surface.
Scratches the surface, yeah.
See, we're going to, we're going to ramp up into this thing as we get going. I mean, it's somewhat, I mean, it's been around for a long time, but the enforcement is starting to kick in where we have to be compliant on a lot of different aspects of education and advertisement and things we need to do. So as we get into it, we'll have a better handle on what we're going to need in the end.
Who's going to be in charge of that? I mean, who's getting tasked?
Sean Como.
With that?
Sean Como, yeah.
What's, does he have a regular full-time job, and this is an added?
He has two.
Set of responsibilities?
Two full-time jobs, he's also the OSHA coordinator, which.
Right.
I don't know how I'm going to keep, keep that going forward, but that's a two-person job that we'll probably have to address at some point, because he's doing both and he's running around like a chicken with his head cut off, and he's very good at what he does, he was a good find.
Okay, so you've got a little bit of it covered in the budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all set? Anybody else?
Ray, a question.
Counselor Iger?
Just a small comment, Mr. Racine.
Yes, sir.
I was really impressed when I saw that 200,000 saving in the streetlights. I assume that's because of the LEDs that were installed? And looking at the savings from that, I was just wondering, do you have any plans on doing other buildings or other areas that could result in similar savings for us?
That's Mr. Brooks's specialty.
Well, Mr. Brooks, okay.
Okay, so what we did on that, that was strictly an LED conversion on all the streetlights in the city. Through the Green Communities Program that the city's been using over the last several years, we have done different projects in different buildings. We've changed out the ballasts and, and the lighting in a lot of the city buildings, school department did some of theirs, we've done the DPW. So there's been a lot of conversion that we get, it's an incentive really from National Grid, so they, they provide us with a rebate after we do the work, which is very helpful. So they provide us with a rebate after we do the work, which is very helpful. That was part of the LED project. Actually, the LED project was just over a million, two, I think, or a million, three. We got an incentive from National Grid, we got assistance from the state, really a cooperative effort all the way along the line, and then we funded it over a three-year period out of city funds, ultimately saving the money that you noted. And we transferred that over to handle the drainage system. So that really has, it was a no-tax increase benefit all the way along the line. We operated at a more economical method with the streetlights, and you get the sanitation and drainage taken care of without any impact financially. So worked out well.
That was great, but it looks like we can't expect any more large changes in that type of a situation. You know, there's no major projects that'll come up.
Well, I was on a conference call with National Grid the eighth of this month, and we sat down and went through a bunch of things, and there are programs that National Grid and Department of Energy are actively promoting. So there are things that we can look at moving forward that are gonna save energy. I think, I'm trying to think of the date, I think it's the net zero on carbon is 2050, I think, is the year that they're looking at. But there are programs that we need to continue to look at that are grant assistance from the state, and then incentives from National Grid that will help us pay for some of this stuff, so it's, I'm a little bit late to the game on that, you know? I mean, if I was 25, instead of where I'm at now, it'd probably be a lot more exciting, but there are things going forward that are gonna be really cost-effective for the city to pursue. So I think this is just the tip of the iceberg, to be honest with you.
Great, it's great, thank you. It's always good to see, you know, where we can save the taxpayers money, so, you know, I really was impressed when I saw that number, so thank you very much.
It was a fun project.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Counselor Bedanza?
Yes, Ray, I've got a couple of inquiries about with our road treatment. I know we've pretty much abandoned sand altogether, is that where we're at?
For the most part.
Yeah.
Very rarely in cases of situation where you need some traction somewhere because of a truck or something stuck, but we really try to not use sand anymore. It's bad for the waterways.
Well, we have to, because of DEP regulations, if we use sand, we have to remove it, and we have to truck it away, right? So isn't that part of the logic of getting away from sand as well?
It's part of it. Say, if we buy, I think I did a calculation at one time, by buying, spreading, delivering, spreading, digging, picking it up, hauling it, stockpiling it, a $9 yacht of sand ends up costing 200 bucks.
Amazing.
In the end, to get rid of it. Because we gotta pay to get rid of it.
So just a couple observations about that. That obviously is a huge factor, but you had just talked about earlier about having to replace trucks that carry salt. Is there a faster obsolescence to those trucks because they're carrying solely salt?
Of course.
So is, I mean, is that an expense?
We tried stainless, we tried everything.
Is that an expense that, you know, we should factor into the equation when it comes to sand versus salt?
I think a $200,000 truck is lasting about 10 years, one of the trucks now is 2003, if we're looking at, you know, the numbers that he's talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still gonna be.
We're getting 15 to 20 years out of these trucks, though. It's not like it's super speeded up where they become obsolete.
I see.
So we do get our money's worth out of them. I don't think to go back to sand would be worth it, to be honest with you.
You raise another point, though. I mean, the salt has its limitations. I mean, I've seen, we get to certain temperatures, and certain inclines, and certain places in the city. If we happen to get a storm during high-traffic times, and the stuff gets packed down, and it's cold, what do we do? Just ad hoc, go out and use sand in those particular situations?
If necessary, we will, but again, we by only treated some, now that works to 15 degrees.
Okay.
So the other salt that they had, this is a new product, newer product, 25-ish, 15, 14 degrees, we can still melt, and still, but it takes the traffic and heating it up and, you know, manipulating it, that's what actually, it creates a solution that stops the barrier from adhering.
So bottom line, you're still confident that in the long run, we're saving money?
Yes, and I think it's safer.
All right.
Like you said, I, there's totally a point where four degrees, nobody's melting anything without, you know, flamethrower and those things, you know? So we try to split the difference. It seems to be very successful for us, and pretty much every community in the area has adopted the same process. I have guys call me all the time, "How do you guys do it?", and they change, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Shafra Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you, Ray. This budget doesn't include any new positions, is that right?
Correct.
So it's just basically your existing staff and then your ongoing operating expenses, right? And just for the public, could you just talk about, or just tell us, how many people you have in the DPW in each of the departments?
There, there's 50 people total, 40 men when we have a full staff on the streets at one time, and between the administrative and clerical 10, so there's 50 people total. So the 40 men, if, and honestly, I'm glad you brought that point up, because we're starting to lose people. We're gonna have to figure out a way to pay people, because there's jobs out there now that, I mean, I'm bringing guys in, they start at $20 an hour, and they get a CDL, truck driver's license, and someone pays them 30. So I mean, we have to come up with a way to keep guys, good guys, and they're hard to get. People don't wanna do snow and trucking and all this, they're not jobs people want anymore. Younger people don't come to us that often. So we wanna try to come up with an incentive to bring better people in and keep them on staff. But they're 40, are we understaffed? Absolutely. What really helps us is, and this is something the mayor suggested to me quite a few times, we have seasonal and part-time people.
Right.
And it's been hugely successful. People like flowers, sidewalks, and clean streets. That's what everybody sees, and that's what we focus on. And it's, we get complimented all the time, how great downtown looks and how the flowers, I mean, people love it, so.
They do. Yep, no question about it. I know you use, the cemetery, I know, has part-time summer workers, right? Where else would you have them? I mean?
We have two guys just trash.
Oh, wow.
One guy at the cemetery. We have one person that cleans at Doyle.
Mm-hmm.
What was the other one? You have another one? I have one opening for a person, but, oh, oh, yeah, we have one guy that mayor hired is on Third Street Park. He works between there, and I have another guy that does just the walkway, Manousanok Brook.
Mm-hmm, keeping it clean?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And it saves us from having me tying up three or four guys. These guys are there, whatever, two, three, four, five days a week, and it's been a huge success.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions with the DPW portion? If not, we can move on to the water and sewer portion, if you'd like to give us an explanation of how this budget will get you through the next year and what we will accomplish.
So I'll start by taking a look at the water budget here. So the first thing that's gonna stand out is gonna be the capital number that's on there. So the water and the sewer accounts are receipts accounts. We had higher receipts this year due to the rate increase that was put into place to fund the No Town nutrient, yeah, the water plant up in No Town, the upgrades in the underdrains, which is underway. That project is gonna be going into repayment for fiscal '23. So we have a, you know, kind of a unique, but temporary situation here where we have excess money for capital, which gives us a good opportunity to get some major projects out of the way. And that's where you'll see that capital number be, you know, a little bit higher. Other than that, you'll see just the step and the longevity increases in the salaries and the wages for the union employees. And the expenses, you have the ONM contract goes up every year by the Consumer Price Index, you have an increase there. We also have a little additional money for some engineering costs that we're gonna be encumbering as part of these projects that we're looking to do. So there's a little bit additional money that we put into there. And as far as larger increases, there is one line item for replacement equipment, and that will go into replacing a one-time expense, a 10-wheel truck, which is also the lead-salt vehicle, so that's one of the vehicles. So that's what the $250,000 replacement is, $220,000 was the quote to replace that truck. So that will be a one-time expense there. Do we wanna keep water and sewer separate, or do we wanna go through?
You could do them together if you want, you know, they're similar.
All right. So on the sewer side, we have a similar situation with the capital, where we have the wastewater treatment plant project that's ongoing. We actually just had the kickoff meeting to enter Phase 2 of that project. I'm sure you all remember the additional appropriation that was required for that. So that portion is, we have the kickoff meeting today. Again, that won't go into repayment till next year, so we have the excess money to spend on some major capital improvements, and then that money's all gonna be reallocated into debt service come next fiscal year. And other than the same situation there on the contract services line item, increase for the ONM contract, as well as the engineering services and some other improvements that we'll need, you know, we're working with Veolia, getting through these, those bigger projects that we have planned.
I know that in the past, we talked about, I forget how, what the, we're talking mileage, I believe, of corrugated pipe that we were looking to replace, if it's all drainage, if that's correct?
That's on the highway side, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I didn't really hear about that. What, where do we stand on that?
We've done some of it. We're going to Viscloide, we have a, I don't know, how many feet is that on Viscloide? 800 feet?
It's close to 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet. So we found, we're able, we don't have a clear number. I know there's 15-plus miles of corrugated around town.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that's low, because there aren't very good records on when that went in. Generally, we find it is when something caves in.
Right.
Nine times out of 10, it's corrugated pipe, and we dig a trench and there's nothing, it's not even there. It's deteriorated to powder. So we'll get 1,000 more feetish this year, and I think what we can do is, I can give you a list of what we've picked off.
Yeah, yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah. It hasn't been the main focus, because there's so much else going on, but I mean, as, what we try to do is, if we're gonna pave a certain road or improve a certain road, we'll get rid of the corrugated at that time, because to just take, I really have one construction crew, and they're doing the basin part to this part, they do the pipe work, they do, they work for the other departments, so although not totally forgotten about, corrugated is a little bit down on the list based on if we're gonna pave that road.
So you do all that on the, that's all 100%? That's all drainage?
Yes.
Right, it has nothing to do with water and sewer?
Correct.
Okay. So with everything else going on, then, is some of that getting, I mean, I know some of it was pretty bad?
Real bad.
Real bad?
Yeah.
Has some of it got put on the back burner with some of these other projects that you've gotten all this funding for, Ray?
Anything that was dangerous is not on the back burner. We attack that right away.
Okay.
But I mean, we don't, we're not, we don't have right now the ability to have a corrugated pipe replacement program, because we don't have the staffing or the equipment. But the same highway crew will do that, and like I say, they're cleaning up a couple of smaller projects, and then they're gonna hit Viscloide Ave, so like as Jake said, we can facilitate that safe school project.
Right. I mean, I know, Ray, you talked about, you know, sidewalks, roads, and flowers, and, you know, it looks beautiful and people see it, but, you know, they don't appreciate what we do underground.
Not at all.
But, you know, they don't appreciate it at all, but I'll tell you, they're not gonna be happy if there's any kind of a failure, because then they're gonna see it, and they're gonna know about it, and we're gonna hear about it when you start having backups of water, drainage, whether it's drainage, storage, or whatever it is.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
Right, so it's important. It's not pretty, it's not, at the end of the day, it's not, it's not pretty to have to spend money on that, but it's important, so.
It's, I understand 1,000% on the importance of infrastructure. I mean, it's all I've ever done my whole life, so I understand the importance of it, and not a lot of people do. But it is highly important, and once we determine there is an issue where a corrugated area is past this point where it's gonna be a safety issue, we attack it.
Okay. And I apologize, I didn't bring it up on the highway.
That's right.
I wasn't thinking about it until we were talking about, I was thinking water, and so I'm thinking pipes, and that's when I was thinking about it, and it was on my mind, so.
Just one thing that I think I'd like to bring up, I know everybody's getting a lot of questions about the water ban. In the water ban, although we're pretty good right now on supply, we, like as Jake stated, we have a problem with the underdrains at No Town, and we can't push out the water we need to. So by keeping the water ban in effect, it's helping us maintain our level of water supply until we fix these things. And that's something we're taking on right now. So we have so many things going on, sometimes I don't even know how we get them done, really.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions on the water and sewer aspect. I know, you know, that Ray was always, you know, very honest with us whenever we needed rate increases, we needed to, you know, meet our debt service, or, you know, pay our bills, or we needed to, you know, do infrastructure, and we needed more revenue, so, you know, I assume that that will continue, and we'll hear about it if, you know, anything warrants, so. Counselor Pauline Cormier, do you have any questions regarding water and sewer?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple. Jake, I guess, or Roger, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry. Could you explain to me, like, when, it wasn't that long ago you guys were in here, and we were talking about another out-of-town customer in Lancaster on the water side. Do we have, are those folks up and running? And you were like, not yet? So?
They were the design guys.
Okay.
We've been in touch with what we wanted for materials and installation, and they're in the process of designing that right now.
Okay. Well, that leads into my next, segue into my next question, which is, how do we enforce the water ban with our out-of-town customers?
That is in the contract with them, that they have to abide by the city's water bans and ordinances and stuff like that.
That contract is with one entity, so it doesn't matter if there's 10 houses and five businesses up there, one entity right now is who we deal with, and if there's a problem with it, we can just shut it off. So there is control, there's gonna be a meter pit or manhole right at the town line. And so Lemester still controls the flows and the terms and conditions.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't limit it, wanna limit it to that one customer. I know we have customers in Sterling as well, right, so.
Yeah, we got some in Lunenburg, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Sure.
So I just, so just wanna, like, someone is, someone does sort of keep an eye on those folks, our out-of-town customers, for compliance on the water ban?
We do, and we rely a lot on the residents. We do get calls from residents that, you know, will say, you know, asking for their day, you know, what day, can I, can I water? Oh, you know, so-and-so is, and we, you know, a lot of times, people just aren't aware, especially the out-of-town. We can send one of our staff over there, have a letter put on the door, knock on the door, inform them, and more often than not, from that point, it's not a problem.
All right, terrific. One last question. So everything else in the budget is straightforward, I'm certainly aware of just about everything. There's just one line item that I'd like some clarity. Line item 1095, water quality control, what does that encompass? Again, line item 1095.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I look at a different sheet than that one there.
We don't have the sheet, you have, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman?
Roger. What line item is that? 1095. Water quality control.
Is it, isn't water quality control, isn't that Sean Como's position?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, that's cool.
I didn't think it was a salary, it looked like a.
Yeah.
No, it's expense. No, it's expense.
You can get back.
That's it.
The salary, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's Sean.
That's a salary?
Yeah.
It's just mislabeled. That's what that is.
You had 69926?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Sean Como's position.
All right, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Councilor Chaffo Zephyr?
Just to clarify, what should that be called, then? If it's misnamed?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Yeah.
Is it specifically water code enforcement? It's just code enforcement?
It's code enforcement, just code enforcement in the ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions for water and sewer? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to just bring up one thing.
Sure.
Before the mayor left, he had indicated we're going to be taking a look at some projects with stimulus funding. So depending on how that stimulus funding is given to the city, and what the criteria will be that we have to comply with, we're going to spend money on some projects, as well as, North Main Street is going to be hopefully paid for out of the excess and deficiency appropriation that was on your agenda last night for the first time. So we want to try and, as Jake said earlier, we try to take all the projects that we have and synchronize those, where we take Wendy's Mass Works project that she worked with us to put together, and we'll take that and consolidate all of those parts, materials or services. We have a meeting tomorrow on relining pipe. So the Mass Works grant is the lead on that, but we get better pricing by including some of the city work that we want to do that's paid for out of our capital budget that isn't part of any grant, but it provides us with a much better price. Same thing on ducted line and pipe and things like that. So those things are going to be forthcoming when the stimulus money is a little bit more formalized in terms of we'll know what we have and where we can put it. But there is a commitment to do some of the sections of the city that we haven't been able to fund, and this will be a real benefit to the ratepayers and the water and wastewater users. So just wanted to add that before we left.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That was kind of my point with my question before, because we know regardless of any of the rest of it, infrastructure has to be part of it with broadband. That, they've made that very clear. What the percentage is, we don't know, but if we've got 20 million coming into Lemus there, that's going to be a substantial percentage.
And we've been working.
And if we're putting money into capital, you know, can that be shifted out to something else if we can use this stimulus money for that?
Right. And Jake has been working on putting together the numbers on some of the projects. So we went over the projects, we took the contracts that we have and incorporated the pricing, so that we're ready to move forward on a couple of different projects as soon as we get some direction.
So we're ready.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good to see everybody again.
Same here.
Good to see you, too.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be the police department, which was scheduled for 6:30. What's that?
Just an hour off.
Just an hour off. This will be line items 187 through 258. Welcome, Acting Chief Kennedy. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
You're welcome. How's everybody? Am I on?
We are well.
A little closer, maybe.
All right.
Hello? Here we go.
Perfect. Okay, we will, we will let you say your piece, and then we will open up to answers and questions.
I was glad to be in front of you all compared to last year. I think I spent about four hours on the phone in a small office in my house. So this is much better, being out and seeing everybody. So, up being my first budget, definitely lost some sleep at the beginning. So basically, I budgeted for a chief and a captain. We're in the process of getting out of civil service and moving in that direction. I spoke to Senator Cronin. He says it's moving well through the legislature, probably a few more months before it's officially out. I asked for an extra sergeant, becoming nine sergeants, which I was given that position. I did ask for two additional sergeants, each at a cost of $63,000 each. Met with the mayor, Mr. Pemmarini, we agreed to keep it at 62. Rest of the payroll for rank and patrol dispatchers and civilian staff, where there were some increases and step raises in longevity only, there's no pay raises in this, in this budget as of right now. I did add in some, my expenses had to go up because of contractual agreements, like our cleaning staff in our building. We got into some programs because of police reform, we had to get, it's PMAM software, it does all of our policies and procedures, it's amazing. It sends out notices to all offices, and the policies will go out, they have X amount of time to review it, and then once it's completed, there's a test afterward, and there's checks and balances. I know the city of Fishworks had this for five years. I wish we had it for five years, but we're just getting it now. We also adopted internal affairs software through the same company, because the police reform was needed in early warning, that's part of the police reform. That company worked well with us, so we got it a pretty good deal. I know, able to use it with some, like, I believe the CARES money, through Miss Weeks' helped us out with. But unfortunately, some other things were bumped up. I'll get you all the things that show you comparisons. I only bumped up about eight things. Just to give you a quick overview, cell phones went up, postage, that's going to go up, because we're, since about a week or two ago, public records requests are pretty much going through the roof, and they're requesting everything. So, you know, Betsy Elgarren, who does our records part, is, you probably see her walking over, she's like Dave O'Plank going over to the post office two or three times a day. So bumps up in there, bumps up in the gas and motor oil, computer supplies. They weren't big bumps, mostly $5,000, $10,000, but computer supplies are not cheap, buying computers on a regular basis, something for the new positions. Prison and meals went up, a couple thousand. Stuff's picking up now, we're getting quite busy these past couple of weekends. A lot of arrests, kind of a greater, bigger jump than months past, because COVID was still in play. There was a bump in training school, that was probably the biggest bump out of this, was about $10,000. I took into account with all the new classes being offered by local, like MPI, Municipal Police Institute, other outside agencies, because of police reform. I want to make sure of my officers and detectives and school resource officers, that hopefully will be going to the schools in the fall, are getting the proper training as we go forward. Replacement equipment, that went up, because I got a lot of projects I've got going on that I'm working with traffic grants that we get from the state, that I have to have money upfront, pay for it first, then they get it back. And plus, we have, I expect a lot of hirings coming up in the, probably after September. I have some openings now that I'm trying to fill, I have two guys in the academy. I have several officers looking to go to law enforcement in other states, and the federal government, too. So I'm expecting, I'm planning for the worst. Hopefully, it ain't that bad. But I had to put replacement equipment, because I have pretty much gone through, basically, the firearms and armory, vests are expensive, and I did a bump in clothing allowance because of the new positions.
Chief, your public records request, do you have a designee at the station for, you know, is that Caitlin?
Depending on the level of the public records request, Betsy Elgarren takes care of all the little minimal stuff. Then it comes in the, if it's above that, usually it'll go to like the Dan Preddy, the court sergeant. And then, especially what we're dealing with now, especially, I sent off probably like four reams of basically paper. It was too big to scan, to send out electronically. That was for a civil rights group out of Boston that wanted all my internal affairs complaints against officers. That took, that was teamwork between the captain, Mike Chicalini, myself, working with KP Law. And then we took what we did, made copies, and then I went to Miss Elgarren, and we got that shipped off. But there's more, I know there's more coming. I speak to Chief Martino on a regular basis in Fishburg. I'm grateful, in this past year, I had guys like Chief Sidlo to help me out, point me in the way. And Chief Martino in Fishburg's been a valuable resource for me to guide me in the right direction. I've learned a lot. So the records reports, there's different levels that we handle it. Some are easy, I mean, I got one the other day that I just got wind of it, I'm like, I can take care of that myself. But it depends on what comes through, and I know there's some big things, I think I'll have to be giving Brian Major a call, because that one might be in his records that he'll keep. But, yeah, it's interesting, but we'll get by. I haven't got this question yet, but I'll probably get it out of the way now. 210 Lancaster Street.
That was coming, that was my first one. My first one.
So originally, when we met, we went into the mayor's office, and, you know, it was quick to go over the fire department, and then some quick examination after that was done, and kind of realized there's certain things that are not in my other budget. And me and Chief Sidlo agreed that we're going to meet probably in a, probably in a month or so. We have to break down three items of the utilities, because I think he was going to end up paying for mine at 29 Church Street, because I think they're tied in to 210. There's three at the bottom, the contract services, cleaning supplies, and another part of replacement equipment that I bumped up, that have to go to the expenses. That is what I normally use, I don't know why they're at 210. I don't have an answer for it, that wasn't done before I was, it was under the pass comptroller. But it easily can be spread out into my expenses, and I think once we just break down the light and gas, the water, that can easily be separated and moved to separate accounts.
Okay.
What was the other one that we always get? The Quinn bill, the Get Your Game incentive, I really thought it was going to go down, but guys like getting promoted that have it, so it stayed the same. It's actually went down a little bit today, but it'll affect the next year's budget. Something I didn't know about until today, so.
Okay. All right. The other question I have is line item 236. It's labeled drug unit, and there is no money.
Yep, there's been no money in that in the past. There, if you go to investigative expenses, that's where basically everything comes out of for them, for equipment and stuff. And there's, they get, they have money that comes out of the, it's like the drug forfeiture account that's due the comptroller's office, that's where they get their money and stuff like that.
Okay.
So I did, did a bump in the drug investigative expenses, because.
I got you.
Things that we need for evidence purposes, just prices are going up. There's certain bags that protect electronics that, you know, for being, things being deleted remotely. So we're buying, have to buy a lot of that now, because of our detectives on the clean side are taking on ICAC, it's a child, basically it's child porn. And we're running into a lot of huge cases, leading the city of Lemus there, because we get alerted from the federal government, the missing and exploited children organization. They, they'll get tips on their end where they forward it to us, or actually, they forward it to the state, and if it's, if it's a big thing, they keep it, if it's something minor, they forward it down to us. But what they forward down to us is, they're gigantic. So these, some of the things we have to buy, is, they have to stay with the evidence until it gets down to the lab in Sudbury, where then it gets protected, and then we get the bags back at that point. But they're going down at a record rate, so we have to buy more, like constantly. So times are changing, unfortunately, in my 26 years, I mean, I would never have thought I'd be seeing this on a consistent basis.
Okay. Now, obviously, when we have a lot of change in personnel, it, you know, I mean, it's expensive for the city.
Yeah.
And you mentioned that there's a lot of people talking about leaving.
Yep.
Assuming that that is a police reform bill that's driving people out, is that part of it, that they, they feel there's too much to deal with now in law enforcement in Massachusetts? Or what, what other factors are there?
I'm not sure if it's really police reform, because a couple of them are going to Florida, to areas I wouldn't want to be going to, but hey, if they want to go, you know, they're young, you know, God bless them, they're great guys. I mean, they're a loss for the city. Another one's looking, he's going to the Midwest, I think that's more of a, I think he might stay, but he's going there because he's, he did a job interview out there, and his wife was applying out there, and he kind of didn't think it was going to go anywhere, and it kind of popped up out of nowhere. So he's giving it its due diligence. That officer's, all the guys that are going where they think they're going, they're all valuable to this department, it'd be a huge loss. But I don't think it's because of police reform, I think maybe families involved, and I'll never step in the way for that, so. And I don't think police reform's scaring anybody, I don't think. I think our guys will get through it, I think Lemus is a great community. I don't think we see the things in the big cities of Minneapolis, Seattle, we don't have that. We have minor stuff once in a while, but, you know, we're a good community. Other than the public records request, I haven't seen anything that's put me on edge yet, so.
Okay. So I know we've already approved some money, some one-time expenses for, you know, mostly police reform related stuff, I believe, training and stuff that's going to.
I did put in for that, I did put in for $200,000, but it was left out, and we're going to rediscuss it afterwards. It'll come back in, it's necessary. In service for, for the officers and myself is, say, basically, it was 40 hours a year, it's basically doubled. So it's going to have to get funded. So I put in for it, but it was left out, but you said we'll have a conversation and come back down with appropriation.
Is there anything else that you can foresee coming? You know, in the next year, possibly, would that police reform or anything else would affect us, or, or I think we got through the worst, the worst of it, as far as the training and?
Well, the training is, you know, I do appropriation, I think it's going to be a consistent thing going forward. I don't think it's going to go back to where it was. I did do a capital expense, which was left out, but, you know, like the DPW with the Sanders. I put in for cruisers and unmarked cars. Cruisers, I mean, usually they do every three years. In our unmarks, you know, we've got a good amount of years out of them, we've actually recycled a couple other cars to kind of try to last a little longer, but it's, you know, we've got a lot of great years out of it. And problems with cruisers, you're always running them, so there's a lot of driving and idling time that makes it worse for those cars.
Right.
I did put it for another one, it's, because we have a computer system, IMC. It's pretty much on its last few years on it, they only have a couple IT people keeping it, keeping it going. So I did put in for Central Square Pro, it's an unbelievable computer system that's going to help with police reform, because they do a lot of things where I use PMAM software, this will take it on, so I might be able to get the new system, hopefully, and we'll lose the other bills. I know Lieutenant Freyer and Miss Weeks are, body cameras are coming, there is a grant that the state put out for like 30 million, and I literally printed it out, walked across the street, because we, we're over in fire prevention now, they went over to 210, I needed the space, so I have Lieutenant Freyer and the walking beats and Janessa, the community outreach over there, that's a little outpost, so I walked over there, they got, got the grant, so I know Lieutenant Freyer, I met with Miss Weeks to see if he can get the ball rolling. Just trying to get ahead of the game with the body cameras. The only thing I can think of is going to be tasers. We're on our first batch, and we're at our limit, so. There's also grants for that out there with the CARES Act, I don't know if that's the right one, but there's one that we can use for it. So that is about it.
Okay. Yeah, the only, the only other thing is, I know that it's always good to keep up with the fleet.
Yep.
Of cruisers, but, you know, stuff like that, once again, we always see, you know, one-time expenditure, we'll see, you know, an appropriation come down from free cash or stabilization, hopefully free cash.
Yeah.
Going forward, and not stabilization. But, you know, so hopefully, we'll see some of that, maybe then during the next fiscal year, if it's, if it's warranted. So that's all I have. Councilor Pauline Cormier, do you have any questions regarding the police?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you for coming down, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilor Angelini?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, good evening.
How you doing?
Good, well, thank you. Just the department grants, you guys are still pursuing, I was.
Yeah, so we just got done with the traffic, traffic safety. We got, we just finished the application for the next fiscal year. And one thing about those grants, like, we have to pay upfront, because they, we can buy $15,000 of traffic-related equipment, like, I put a feedback sign on Grove Ave. Actually, I rebuilt a couple trailers with some older feedback signs that work very well. We bought some radar, lidar units, but we're also planning for the next batch that we have to pay for, and we're trying to figure out what kind of traffic equipment or safety we can, that will benefit the city of Lemus. I think we're probably going to think about more traffic data collection, because we collection because we get a lot of complaints of speeding and it's so easy to put this out there because people have, a lot of it's perception. And it's great when you can put something out there that can tell you both-way traffic at different times of day, tells you the peak times, or isn't, or there is no problem. It answers a lot of questions. This time, I think we might buy like two or three of them because they're relatively inexpensive and you can place them. They're very mobile, so. We're investing in that and especially the grant for the body cameras. And there's, I think, three other DOG grants that we're in the process of doing. Yep.
All set? Is there anybody else? Counselor Shoffa Zephyr?
Thanks very much, Chief, for coming down. I just want to go over the department staffing. I was a little, I just want for clarification for myself. So in the budget, it indicates you have four clerks.
Yep.
One chief, one new captain.
Yep.
Six lieutenants?
Yep.
Okay, and that includes the new one? So six will be total with the new one?
No, Sergeant's nine.
I'm sorry?
Sergeant's got the new one. There was a sergeant added.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. So lieutenants, you have six?
Yep.
Okay. Lieutenants, eight plus a new one, right in the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
I asked for 64 patrolmen, but I only got 62.
Okay, this says 64.
Oh, that, well, that was a typo. It's 62. 64 is what I asked for.
No, you said 62 and I was confused, so that's why I just wanted to.
Well, that was correct for the numbers. You wanted to compare them.
Very right. No, that's exactly right. One mechanic, 12 civilian dispatch.
Yep.
A matron, two outreach advocates, which is great.
Yep.
So I think that does it for staff, but I have a couple of other questions. You fortunately covered many of my questions. Thank you very much. The replacement in public safety line of $50,000, I think you indicated that that's for like replacement, like firearms and body armor?
Yep.
When people leave or turn over, that's what that's for?
Yeah, I mean, we keep replacement vests, but that's mostly for training purposes because they won't fit you. They get fitted. But our armory's depleted, you know, so we hire nobody. We got to go buy new guns. And they're like, you know, 800 to 1,000. Vests are about the same. Any ammo I have to buy, it all comes with expenses. Yeah, there's various things we've got going on. So mostly just equipment for the guys on the street.
Okay.
So it's unfortunately, a lot of things, I mean, I learned a lot in this year. I mean, you know, every year, things go up, inflation, I guess. My cleaning crew went up like four grand.
Well, so the contract services that you, I think you addressed.
Yep.
Fifty, you want to, you know, $10,000?
Yeah.
And that's because of adding 210 Lancaster?
No, that basically added because of the cleaning crew.
Yep.
The company that provides it. And then the PMAM software that I had to provide upfront for it. So that was going to be in it.
Will you get that money back in grant funds, you think, or?
I might. It's a trial by fire. It's new to our department, so a lot of it, we're going to try to pass it through. But just in case I can, I have to make sure it's there.
Okay. And then just the things that aren't in the budget or the things that you had asked for. You had asked for two additional sergeants?
No, two patrolmen.
Two patrolmen.
That'd be, that's why you get the 64.
Got it.
But I'm at 62. And that's $63,000 each.
Yep. And then you had asked for capital expenditures, cruisers and unmarked cars, correct?
Yes.
And some, the $200,000, I think, for in-service training, was that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that my notes are right.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else that you had requested that didn't end up in the, in this year's budget?
The cruiser stuff, it was in there. And then CS Pro computer system.
Yep.
That was around, just under, just under $400,000. But
Oh, wow.
we can negotiate that. We'll talk about it later day with the mayor, see how he wants to go.
In terms of a capital expense?
Yep.
Expenditure, yep.
Yep.
Okay, that was it?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Idinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, boom, just went out of my head.
It happens all the time to me.
Last night, we had an issue with a home rule petition for special police for the retired officers.
Yes.
Where is their training? Do they have to take the same 40 hours of training or not?
Well.
And who pays for that?
I'm in a tough situation with that right now because we wanted to keep going with that to have it just in case. But a lot of those guys have missed a lot of time. They'd have to go to another academy, okay, to get in compliance. So I think I'm going to have to drop them down because of July 1st, they're not going to be able to wear anything with police on them or have any police powers, which there, there's only one officer who just retired, Lou Viola, who I went to the academy with. He's the closest one to be able to stay properly trained. The other ones are five years, seven years, a decade out of being trained. That's a lot of time to get back. A lot of, this was something that should have been handed a while ago.
So this is another casualty of police reform?
Well, we're very lucky that we have a traffic unit, that way we wrote it, that civilians can drop into it and they just have, they just go at a lower rate of pay. I want to talk to the mayor because the union basically said that they would go up a couple dollars more to make it, you know, competitive. They won't make them out. The guys, like I would make, work in a road job. But they were, they'd be wearing a different uniform, basically like a gray khaki, but it won't say police on it. It's just going to say traffic unit. Because of police reform, they can't have anything with police on it if they're not going to be certified under the standard.
I think you may be underestimating the number of public requests you're going to be getting.
No, I'm not underestimating. I'm expecting it. I mean, what I'm hearing, I mean, I, you know, I can only produce what I got, but I make sure I keep copies so I don't have to keep doing it over and over again.
Yeah. I think a lot of attorneys are looking at this as a cash cow. None on our committee, by the way.
No, I understand that. But, you know, you know, the ones I've seen so far, they seem that they're from think tanks in certain, you know, groups. So I haven't seen any independent attorneys coming by yet, but, you know, it's part of the game, so.
Well, thank you very much. Nice presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
All set?
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Chief.
It's all yours.
Next, we have, last but not least, the fire department, which was scheduled for 645.
Sorry?
We're a little over an hour late. Good evening, Chief. As you know, I do have a family member on the fire department, which makes me have to abstain from anything to do with salary and wages and overtime. So as usual, I'm going to take this portion into two parts. The fire department itself is line item 260 through 335. But right now, I'd like to discuss 292 through 335, and then I'll turn the rest over to the clerk so she can handle the other portions of it. So if you'd like to, to speak about your expense side first, Chief?
Okay. On the expense side, I did, I made minimal changes this year. I asked for an increase to the water bill of $2,000 and a $2,000 increase in the cleaning supplies. Everything else was, I asked for level funding on the, you know, the budgeted expenses, not the capital outlay.
Okay.
I know in past years, I've explained that I always try to build in like a 3% cost of living. This year was a little unique. We had gotten some COVID money and I can go into that presentations, but we did a lot of renovations to the fire stations to make them safer. So with that additional money to the COVID money, I was able to, I didn't run, obviously, I didn't run short this year, but I was able to do some upkeep on some things. So with the climate of the city and everything that was going on in the past few months, I just tried to keep it simple because we're going to be coming, well, hopefully, with 210 Lancaster Street. So once we figure out what it costs to run that building down there and trying to put a plan together on the stuff that we've repaired, the future repairs, hopefully there'll be, you know, new windows, which will make it much more energy efficient. So maybe the, hopefully, the heating cost, we're replacing all the light fixtures. We've got it through a grant of National Grid. Joe Poria and CJ are changing them. So I'm hoping that the cost that the city had, that the police was paying to maintain that building, hopefully, will be reduced. And then if we go through with the plans that we have for it, there'll be more use from the city. I can give that in a presentation form, if you'd like, or if you just want to stay on this budget.
We can just stay on this and just, if you can, yeah.
Sure. So anyway, so I only asked for the two minimal increases and we'll grant them.
Okay. Yeah, no, and as far as 210 Lancaster Street, I, you know, I appreciate the tour that I had that day. I couldn't go when everybody else did. I had a conflict, but you gave me a tour before you had to rush off to a fire in Fitchburg that afternoon. But, you know, it had been a while since I'd been in that building and I'm glad that the BAT situation
Yep. Yes.
is cleared up now. We got past that. Now that there's occupancy there, something like that should not happen again. But, you know, I'm certainly not an expert in energy efficiency. But, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of savings to be had by some upgrades in that building. Like you said, lighting, windows. I mean, you don't have to be too smart to realize when you go up to the windows and you can, you know, feel what's going on around them that, you know, there's some savings to be had in, you know, heating and air conditioning and, you know, those types of savings. So, you know, I'm looking forward to that building evolving. I know that you said it seems to be working out very well.
Correct. It's fantastic.
I'm glad we found a use for it, although, you know, the promise was made it was going to be a police station many years back. At least we have a use for it. And it seems to be like it'll be a use that fits in with that neighborhood. So hopefully, by the next time we're sitting here again for another budget hearing, there'll be more that will have evolved with that building and, you know, some good things. And but other than that, you know, everything looks pretty standard in your expense side. There's nothing, you know, in here that really stands out or surprises me or leaves me wondering. So I think I'm personally good. And I'll ask, well, actually, I'll, at this point, if Counselor Pauline Cormier wants to handle the rest, and then she can do questions and answers on the whole thing, that's fine.
Unless there's any, is there any member of the council that has specific questions as to the expenses side?
I think you didn't ask for anything that you didn't get, right? Chief, you said that you had asked for level funding, basically, with those two little bumps, the $2,000?
On the expense.
On the expense side, so, okay, good. All right. Thanks.
All set? And Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, when the mayor was down here earlier, he referenced, you know, we put together a one-page, or I guess, on the overtime analysis.
Yeah.
Could you give us perhaps a little taste of that?
Yeah, so the thought process of the city, the comptroller and the mayor over the years has been, it's cheaper a lot to do, use overtime than it is to hire additional employees. So what I do is I take what a senior firefighter makes, 25 years of service, longevity, education, you know, like average education. And then I calculate in is health benefit, you know, life insurance benefit, the retirement portion that the city has to fund, and the YOPEB figure that the city uses. And I come out with a figure that, I always say, it costs about $100,000 for a firefighter. You know, the budgeted salary portion is, you know, $73,000, but with the benefits, you know, with the individual issues and the city health insurance. You know, and then I also add in there is a senior firefighter with 25 years, he'll get his six weeks of vacation, and we have to backfill that on overtime. So it's anywhere between $100, $600, $10,000 a year for a firefighter. And then to fill one position for the whole year on overtime, it comes out to about the same price. So, you know, if I'm using that $49, $50 an hour figure for that $100,000, a firefighter's overtime rate is $49.50 an hour. So yes, it's, the city doesn't incur the liability of having new employees, so it's basically a wash on the cost. The issue that I run into is we have staffed the second ambulance over the years. The city obviously, you know, keeps growing, growing, growing. We're busier and busier. And we rely more, we're relying on overtime so much that, in my estimation, it's becoming unhealthy, is I'm forced hire, I never had to force hire until this year. Sunday, I think we had to force hire like four people in the day shift, four people in the night shift. So I'm always advocating is, you know, it's the same dollar amount is I need more people. So I put that sheet together to show that it basically is the same amount of money. And I'm not saying we do away with overtime, but we need to like make it less of our budget. Yeah. Yeah.
And one last thing. Mayor Russell mentioned.
What a great guy I am, right? Yeah, you made me wait a little. I'm sorry about Sunday.
So Mayor Russell mentioned engine five.
Yep.
What are we looking at for a number? What can we expect at some point?
For the engine?
Yeah.
So in the industry, they go up about 3% a year. So when we bought the last one, which was 2017, I think, or 16, I did the numbers the other day. It was high 500s. So at 3% added on each year, it's up to about 675. So the issue with buying a fire truck is, from the time you put, place the order, it's about a year to receive. So if the city has to appropriate the money, then we have to go through the bid process. And, you know, that can take anywhere three, four, six months. So to replace a fire truck, we're talking a year and a half down the road. So the one I'm looking to replace is a 1995. It's our, we run three staffed engines. Then we have two backups. And our primary backup is an O4. And then our secondary backup is a 1995. So, you know, it's 26 years old. So if it takes another year to two, you know, you're looking at a 28-year-old piece of apparatus that was originally stationed in North Lemnester. That's a busy company. So it's got a lot of wear and tear on it. And then the other issue that we're having is like everything else, all the fire trucks rely on computers. So they're out of service a lot more. So we rely on running our backups because our trucks have to, you know, the computer will say there's something wrong with it. We'll have to take it out of service. If it's evening or nighttime and it's, you know, we have a backup, we'll run the backup. Then the mechanic, the next day, will attempt to repair it. If it's a, you know, real emergency, he'll come in. So we're relying on running backups more. And then age of apparatus also affects our ISO ratings for the insurance, which, you know, the average homeowner may not take, if our rate change, if our rating changes, it may not affect the average homeowner as much, but it affects the large manufacturing in Lemnester. So we've always used that as an attraction to draw businesses or maintain them is we have a top-notch fire department. And the lower we keep our rating, it may save them money and hopefully keep them in the community or attract them here. Yeah.
That was very informative. I think.
Oh, thank you.
No further questions, Madam Chair?
Chief, I actually had one question. I'm looking at a line item on yours, and there's an $88,000 request and in the budget for information technology?
That's actually a position.
It is.
Yeah. So that, it's firefighter Ricky Cormier. And he's a full-time firefighter, but he works days now. And he takes care of all our infrastructure of the computers, which are tied into our radios, tied into our fire apparatus, our personal protective clothing, our breathing apparatus. That position has come as important, has become as important as a master mechanic who takes care of the apparatus to us. So that, when the new, when the three new positions are funded, you know, in this budget, that is actually one of them. You know, we're getting three new firefighters, but one of them is backfilling Ricky.
Okay.
Yep.
Chief, earlier, you heard the acting police chief, and he said that they're having a lot of transitions in the police department. in the police department. Are you experiencing the same thing? Is there a high turnover, are you more stable?
Well, we're currently hiring six. We have six firefighters starting July 6th, and we're going to do our own academy. It's kind of consistent with us, there's always new people coming in, and there's always, you know, retirements. Sometimes there's a little more and sometimes a little less, but years ago, when a firefighter retired, you could take his personal protective gear, his coat, his helmet, and his face mask, and give that to a new firefighter. Everything's custom fit, everything is designed for the individual, we have to have fit tests to make sure we have the right mask, so when a firefighter, new firefighters come, like I'm getting, we're getting six new firefighters, we have to outfit them with $3,000, $3,500 worth of protective gear, and then we have to do physicals, medical screening, civil service has changed over the year, they put that cost back onto the cities. So years ago, we would go to a civil service doctor and get a free screening for the city. Now you're looking up $800 per new hire. So those, all those, those costs were absorbed through my budget, you know, when I'm budgeted in the medical. That's not only the ambulance supplies, we take out the medical and psychological exams for the new hires.
Okay.
Yeah. And one of the things that the mayor did this year was the COVID funding, is they're outfitting all 80 of the members in new protective gear, which is awesome for us, that's, that's a big, big plus for us. Very excited.
Excellent.
Yep.
Excellent, I don't have any further questions, is there anyone on the finance? Council Angelina, did you have any other questions? Any other members? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. So Chief, you said that you're getting three new firefighters?
Correct.
Right. Did you ask for any other positions that were not funded in this budget?
I didn't, I actually have my, I have a cheat sheet of notes, and usually I have a wish list when I ask. But honestly, this year, with everything that happened over the last couple of months with the comptroller's office, I had conversations with the mayor, and basically, just to make it easy on all of us, was what he verbally agreed to was what I submitted in the budget, because when we put the wish list in, if we put a wish list in and I want four new firefighters, I've got to adjust the educational incentive, the clothing allowance incentive and everything, and then, you know, as the budget process comes to an end, it's usually right at the end of the fiscal year, and it causes a lot of work for Mr. Pammarini's office and the clerical staff in my office. So this year, I didn't really put a wish list, because the mayor, he said, you know, we'll put the three in, so we did the three, and very appreciative of it.
Okay, can I just run down the list of what's in the budget in terms of your staff?
Sure.
Okay, so, it says two clerks?
Correct.
One chief?
Correct.
Five deputy chiefs?
That's, that budget is, that section of the budget is wrong. The dollar amount is correct.
Okay.
But the section that says how many members?
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I can read off?
Please.
Yes, so the Fire Department consists of one chief, six deputy chiefs. We were five, so the mayor this past year has allowed me to promote to a fifth one. That position is the position I've been requesting each year for the last half dozen, at least, years of an EMS training officer. So I had Deputy Danny Kerwak did it temporarily for about a year, and now Deputy Long is in that position. That's the six deputies position. So then I have 18 lieutenants, which that stayed the same.
Yep.
One master mechanic, then the information technology person, and then a total of 57 firefighters. So the net total is three, with one being the deputy chief in the training EMS position, the IT position, and then a new firefighter that will be on the, you know, apparatus.
Okay.
So we had a total of 81 members, that's not counting the two clerical, these are the uniform. We had a total of 81 in previous years. We now have a total of 84 salaried positions in the uniform, what I call the uniform section of the Fire Department.
Yeah, 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 and in total, you'd have 86 if you added in the two clericals.
Yes, and then Joe Poria and CJ are above that, but they have their own, they come out of their own separate budget that's managed by me.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Council Frida?
Chief, do you anticipate, or I'm sure you probably don't, but, do you have any issues with any of the gear with some of these chemicals that are surfacing throughout the state and some of the turnout gear?
Yes, so right now, they're not, there's no, there's a, they're manufacturing, but in very low quantities. So we just purchased the new set of Lion gear, and it's the only one that's available out there. I'm assuming that in the not-too-distant future is they're going to outlaw that chemical that they use in there, the PFAB. But yeah, you know, I spoke before, the cancer rates are higher in firefighters and the chemicals, you know, the plastics and everything that are burning, but through this past, it's kind of an offshoot of that, is through this past year with the COVID money and, you know, the will of the mayor and the council and everything, was we did a lot of renovations to our living quarters, and we put in unisex bathrooms in the two outline stations, we're finishing up new laundry rooms, we've had the wash, we've had the gear washes for a while, we get two more last year, one more last year on a grant around this time. So we're really taking another step of making sure that everybody has the chance to wash their gear and wash when coming from a fire, but eventually, that chemical will be outlawed in the gear, but I don't see that happening within the near future. You know, and our gear needed to be replaced, so we couldn't wait, I guess.
Yeah, we should be doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
All set? Council Frida? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Just quick, so when you said that the COVID money purchased, all new protective gear, is that, you're talking about your turnout?
Yes.
Turnout gear, so every firefighter got a completely new set?
It's on order, 80 sets. You know, it's manufactured by Lion firefighting, and it's state-of-the-art, so a lot of the members will have two sets. The ideal is to have two sets, so they all have their set now. When a new firefighter is hired, we give them a new set. So some of the older drivers, their set is around 10 years old, but they're, anybody that was hired since I've been chief, which is quite a few now, is their set could be eight years old, six years old, four years old, two years old. So all the group of the younger firefighters that are actually more, you know, active in the firefighting will have two sets, and they'll have the ability to wash a set when they get back and put on their backup set.
Right.
And then when the new set is dry, use it, so.
What's the cost of that? Do you have any idea what the cost is?
Yeah, so a set of pants and a jacket is $2,400, it's around $2,500. And then, and that's what we try to have two sets of, is a jacket, a coat, the hood, and gloves. And, you know, the gloves are another $100, the hood is probably 50, so you're looking at $26, $50. And then when you add on, and you don't need two sets of these but boots, and then your face piece, and some other gear that they carry, you're looking at over the $3,000 per firefighter. That's not accounting the air pack in the radio. The city invests a lot of money, and one firefighter
Right.
Is walking around with seven, 10, you know, $12,000, $15,000, so, you know, if we have 19 guys on duty, there's $12,000 or $15,000 of equipment for them at their use, just for their personal protection.
Wow.
That was CARES Act money, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so.
So you might be able to use some of the APRA money that's coming as well.
Correct, we could have talked to the mayor and.
You know, 20 million, 20 million, I want to see it lined up to go somewhere.
Yeah. No, I mean, obviously, you know, we watch that, you know, the union is watching, you know, that money, so we're anticipating and hopeful that, you know, the purchase of a new fire engine or some upgrades, you know, will be much more easier for the city to accomplish now, so.
Anyone else, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief, I'm going to turn it.
Can I just make a couple of comments that, so, the, over the last, you know, I go back to the beginning of COVID, because that's kind of the times we're in. So I know last year, I explained a little about, we put the ambulances out in the outline stations, the two were usually downtown, and because of COVID, we separated, but I have years of experience, and it's worked out fabulous. So the city, the city since I've been on, has grown on the south side to catch up with the north side, so there is no slower or busier part of the city anymore, it's pretty well segmented, and moving the ambulance outline, you know, it actually was, worked out really well for us, separating the crews, so we're going to maintain that, so that the money that was the CARES Act invested in upgrading those stations, and then, you know, 210 Lancaster Street, we want to, you know, keep going forward, and my goals and objectives every year that I give to the mayor is, one of the things I've been asking for is, we needed additions to our fire station, we needed upgrades in our living quarters, we needed a training facility, and we actually were able to accomplish a lot, because we upgraded the living facilities, and then 210 is going to give us the training and the room we need. So I'm kind of pitching that the money that we invest in 210 is going to be much, much cheaper than the money maybe the city would have had to borrow to build us additions, so I'm just doing my little pre-pitch that the building is beautiful down there, and, you know, it may not fit the police needs, but for us, for a fourth station, and to do our office and training, and then the upstairs room, you know, thank you very much for supporting us, you had funded some of the money already, so. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Mr. Pammarini for stepping in, no, he was a big help, and this was a lot, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
And I'm taking this, Wendy texted me, she left us here, so. Yeah, and why you think I was stealing her?
So, back over to you.
Thank you. And that, with that, our night is concluded, we will be back here at 6 o'clock tomorrow night for additional hearings, followed by a 7 o'clock, a 7 o'clock subcommittee meeting of the Finance Committee. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. We are adjourned at 8:18, thank you all very much.